It's all that I'm told. And some of them. You guys saying, yes. She's already been so many days. And. So. I don't remember.
Good afternoon. On this meeting. The twenty-third day of February twenty twenty-third, and I call this meeting a meeting of the Laredo College Board of Trustees to order. If I can have Mr. Godal say the prayer, and then Mr. Martinez pledge allegiance, please, please rise.
Loving and gracious God, you are indeed the giver of all good gifts, and we thank you today for all your blessings, for the successful outcomes of our college events, and for all of our faculty, our staff, and most importantly, our students. We ask that you bless them abundantly, and we continue to seek your wisdom, your guidance, courage, and your strength. Be with us in our deliberations and help us to be wise in the decisions that we make for the good of all those who have placed their trust, and most important, most importantly, their confidence in our leadership. Grant us the insight to lead with integrity so that our decisions may reflect what is right and what is good. Help us to make those decisions that are for the good of all those and guard us from blind self-interest. Dear Lord, grant us the humility to always seek your will in all that we do and all that we say. Amen.
Where is the basis of the United States? What information and under God?
Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. The Battle, can you please call roll?
Yes, Ms. Luisa Sepeda.
Present.
Jorge De La Do, present. Jackie Lemon Ramos, absent. Eric Caparavides Garcia, absent. Sidney Leando. Mercutio Martinez Jr. Esteban Angel, absent. Karina Elizondo, absent. And Estita Cantubella. You have a board member.
Thank you. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that a notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Make it more than perform on approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting that was scheduled on the third first of January.
Then I have a. Mr. Martinez has made a motion of the approval of the minutes. I have a second by.
Ms. Gandel.
Ms. Gandel. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any public testimony? Thank you. Next item is recognitions, introduction of personnel, and new personnel actions for the month. Five A is Laredo College at Community College Day at the Texas Capitol. Mr. Camerino Castillo.
Madam Chair, as they make their way to the to the podium, Mr. Castillo and Dr. Solis and a couple of other staff members led a wonderful group of our students to the Community College Day in Austin, and they have a short presentation for us today.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Ramirez.
Good evening, Madam President. You can be just about board members, Dr. Ramirez, administrators, guests, and students. My name is Camilo Castillo Jr., Associate Vice President for Student Life and Engagement, and I would like to present today information regarding Laredo College's participation in Community College Day on January twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-three. I do have a short video to show, and I hope I can show you that we have. It's twenty fifty seconds long, and then I'm going to turn it over to our students to provide a little bit of information about their experience on that particular day. And now I'm going to turn it over to our students so they can provide you information about their experience.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members. So my name is Alphalama. I am the Sergeant of Arms of ASO. And so with the Austin trip, we had a very great opportunity to go ahead and spread awareness about the lacking of funding that community colleges are currently having right now. So with the intent that we were there to lobby and to mention to the representatives to help support the bill that would help fund community colleges, we got to meet with Representative Brian Goulian, Representative Tracy King, and Representative Zaffarini, and all of them were in favor of the college bill. And one of the main takeaways that I could see was that community colleges, although smaller than universities, have support from representatives, and thankfully with this trip, we were able to see that as long as we're vocal about wanting more funding for the community colleges, that we would receive it. So we got to speak, each student got to speak a little bit of time with each representative that we were able to meet. And so with that, my the main takeaway for me was, you know, I got to speak to Judge Zaffarini and speaking to her about the potential of supporting this bill and helping us. She was all on board, and she was mostly everyone, all the representatives were very surprised that we were very vocal about this bill and the the opportunity to meet with them. So with that, I'll just say the trip was, I believe, a success, and any future versions of this trip, I would highly support because it allows for us to it allows for students like us to go ahead and speak to representatives about what we as students need and what colleges need as well. So with that, I'll pass it to my next student. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening to all. My name is Ramon Gonzalez, and I am here representing the ASO, Associated Student Organization. Now personally, from College Day, I really enjoyed getting to take a look at the Texas State Capitol, which I had never been to. It was an absolute blessing and an honor. So we're very thankful for that. And then I also really enjoyed talking to Senator Judas Zaffarini because she had a lot of wise words to give us with all her years of knowledge and experience and everything that she's been through. I personally learned a lot that day, and I really enjoyed the whole trip as a as a whole, so.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Martinez. I'm here representing the COT program that was funded by the Caris Grants. I just want to say that, you know, we all have this perception that they're not really listening to us, especially as students. You know, sometimes we feel like we don't have a voice that we don't really that we can make that big of an impact in the choices that they make at the Texas Capitol. But what the what this trip did is that it really changed, at least for me and I know for everybody, the our perception that we actually do have a voice and that they're actually listening to us. What this bill is going to do is super important. It's not only going to extend the services that Laredo Colleges or that Laredo College already offers, but it's going to give the opportunity that we have to other students in the future, which is something that I'm sure everybody in this room supports. I'm very thankful for the college for this opportunity. Just think, he said it's also my first time at the at the state capital, and it's it's something that I would recommend everybody if you haven't been. It's life-changing. You you feel you feel, you know, just being there, you feel like this, I don't know, this aura, you know, around you because you know that the decisions that are being taken place in that building impacts millions of lives, and this bill is going to be, I'm I'm pretty sure, a success, and it's going to be for the good of all the community colleges around Texas. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ivan Loski Jr., and I'm representing the LEAST program. It was truly an honor to be a part of the Austin trip for Community College Day and to go visit the state capital and meet our representatives and our senators. I'll spare you the politics because I'm sure you've already heard a lot about that. So I'll speak on the positives. It was it was a really great experience just to explore the state capital and see how beautiful it is, and to me, to me, community college is, you sometimes have a close mind on what it really is, but then on a community college day, you meet so many different students all over Texas, I had so many different community colleges, and you hear the struggles and the stories and the different things that they experience. But of course, at the end of the day, we all have the same goal is to be successful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Anna Perez, and I am the Secretary of the ASO. I'm very grateful to you all because you all gave me the opportunity to be in the Capitol. I like it a lot because all all the diversity since my first language is Spanish, and I I had the opportunity to talk in English and Spanish, and I get to know more people, and I'm really thankful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um. Good afternoon. My name is Emily Solis. I'm with the LEAST program, and going to the state capital was truly just amazing. I met different, so many different students who are all from college. People from students from Houston, Dallas, Odessa, I got to know who they who they were, and I got to know who I was, and really, we all were there to share our stories and share why we thought this bill was so important and vital to, you know, get passed. Um, and I had the honor of speaking with Senator Zaffarini about who I was, and she was so willing to listen to all of our our voices. She had that sincerity in her voice, and not only that, but like her actions and what she did really reflect her values and what she thinks is important for colleges around Texas. And it meant a lot to me that she was so on board, and she did not hesitate at all when we asked for her support for the pass of the bill. And, you know, I just I had a great time meeting so many different people and getting my voice out to so many different people who share the same values as me and as you know, letting our voices be heard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ellopes, President of ASO for the record, and as I mentioned last meeting, I'm grateful for this big opportunity that you all gave me. I never went to the Capitol as well, and it was like an honor to get to meet like all the people who represent us, get to meet like the person whose buildings are learning. So it's like it it is like I'm really thankful for this big opportunity. Thank you.
Now, this is just a small group. We took eighteen students to the state capital along with staff, Dr. Solis, myself, and another staff member from our LEAST program also attended. In addition to that, we were also visited and accompanied by our president, Dr. Ramirez, our board members, Ms. Luisa Sepeda, and additional two board members as well. But one of the things that I do want to mention is that our students had a great impact in speaking with our senators. However, not only did this group of students here participate in College Day, but they also participated in one of our local events here that happened this past Friday with Martha Washington Celebration Ball. And so this group of students dedicated their time, volunteered their time to assist and facilitate that, not only visiting the Capitol, but also meeting with our local, you know, our local representatives, our local community, and letting them know about their programs about Laredo College, so that way we can reemphasize how important community colleges are here in the city of Texas, but more important here in Webb County. So with that, I thank you, and I leave it open for any questions.
Chair recognizes Mrs. Vela. I was there Friday.
Thank you.
Can you repeat it on the mic, please? Oh, I'm sorry. I was I was there Friday, and I'm a member of the society, and it's just a little thank you for your help. Everybody was so impressed with all of you, and I hope we can use you again.
Definitely can always count on our Laredo College students to assist.
Thanks. I hope you enjoyed it. It was. It was nice.
They looked so nice.
I know. They really looked nice. Everybody was. Everybody was very, very impressed. So, thank you. Chair recognizes Mr. Martinez.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I am a I would like to actually recommend and suggest that Dr. Ramirez ought to have a Laredo Day on an annual basis. It is obvious that all of you had a very it made quite an impression on you, and I know that sometimes we take things for granted, but particularly more so when you have never been exposed or never been to that impressive state capital. It it really is very encouraging when when you see the the activity of our state representatives and our state senators, and also the impact that it can have. Particularly more so, I I do commend you for having the time that you ended up taking to go with the college, and I certainly would like to recommend that the administration of this college or this institution do this on an annual basis because it obviously does have an impact on on our students, and I obviously I want to commend you, and I certainly without question, I'm sure that you made a very positive impact in behalf of Laredo College to the elected office holders over in in the state capital. Thank you very much.
Chair recognizes Mrs. Jackie Leonard Ramos in attendance, and the chair recognizes Mr. Vela.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Definitely a unique opportunity for each and every one of you. I think echoing the sentiments of not only trustee Vela, but also Judge Medcule, I'm doing this every year, but also we could use you guys for every bill we we need to pass. I think it would be simply amazing, but definitely a unique opportunity for y'all to at least see, you know, some of the inner workings that take place in the within the state legislature, and especially in the Senate. I know I I don't think I had an opportunity to visit the state capital until after college, and I I think some of you had the great opportunity to meet and sit down and speak with Senator Zaffarini, which I think the first time I sat down and met with her, I think it was a little starstruck, so I don't think I was as brave as you guys were in speaking for, but but definitely an amazing opportunity. Grateful for not only Senator Zaffarini, but also Representatives King and Representative Ryan Ginn. I understand you all weren't able to meet with Representative Raymond, which was unfortunate, but you know, hopefully we can do this on an annual basis. But yeah, congratulations, guys. It's a great, great opportunity for you guys. Definitely happy for you all.
Chair recognizes Mrs. Vela. I don't know if it's possible, but it would be nice to send them what they said. Each one of the representatives and the senator would say. Well, it would be nice because they need to know the impression that they made. They'll work with Mr. Agus and get their the video so that we can send it to. Thank you. Thank you. And on behalf of myself and the board, I did get to speak to two representatives, which is Representative King and Representative Ginn over the weekend, because they were here in attendance for the WBCA. They did thank you and thank the college for sending you to the Capitol. They were very impressed that you are were very vocal about the bill, and that you asked him for your help for the help to pass the bill. So they were they were very impressed with you. So thank you for representing Laredo College and doing such a great job at Laredo College Day at the Capitol. Thank you very much. Would you all like to take a photograph? Yes, you want to take a picture? Yes, come on up. Okay, next item is five B, Texas Workforce Commission, Jobs and Education Protection, Jet Grant, Mr. Gabriel Lozano, Miss Sandra Cortez, and Ms. Brenda Martinez.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Gabriel Lozano, Director of Grants, for the record. It's my pleasure to announce a grant that we received from the Texas Workforce Commission in the amount of three hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred dollars. And to elaborate a little bit about some of the specifics, I'd like to recognize Ms. Brenda Martinez, Director of Continuing Education, and Miss Sandra Cortez, Dean of Community Education.
Good evening, Madam President. Board members, Dr. Ramirez, Dr. Rodriguez, Karina, and colleagues. My name is Brenda Martinez. I am the Director. Uh, my name is Brenda Martinez. I am the Director of the Continuing Education Department. And just like Mr. Gabriel Lozano mentioned, we were able to apply and, uh, receive this grant. Under this grant, the C, the C department will acquire three state-of-the-art, uh, truck simulators. With this equipment, we will be able to integrate simulate, simulation-based driver training into the professional truck driving program. In addition, the equipment will also be used to provide professional training to the trucking industry throughout the region. The equipment will be located at the South Campus where our CDL program resides. So our objective is to train two hundred students. In different, uh, visual scenarios, atmospheric, uh, conditions, road surfaces. And any other situation a professional driver may face or may encounter while performing their job. We're predicting to complete this project within a year. And I would like to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Uh, Gabriel Lozano, Director of Grants. Ms. Cynthia Rocha, Workforce Development Coordinator, and for assisting in the development and proposal of this grant. And of course, to all of you for the continued support to our programs and most importantly, our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just for the record, uh, my name is Sandra Cortez in the community ed, and this was the second time we applied. We weren't going to give up. Uh, because we know how important, uh, this is not just to our students, but others in the community that may, uh, benefit from, uh. Doing training on those simulators. So thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. This really helps, uh, the program expand. Uh, we've been looking for ways to expand the program and they've been very aggressive in looking for funds to try to expand the program. And so using these simulators will definitely help support the needs of the community and. And the program developments that they're working through and, and aggressively trying to, um. Express here, there you go.
There you go.
And so, again, this, these simulators, uh, I wish we had six of these.
I know.
Uh, but we'll keep trying. We're, we're, they're, they're committed to making this program a success and, and we just definitely have the need. We have, uh, people who want to get into the program. Uh, this is gonna help. Help the program continue to grow and develop.
Chair recognizes Mr. Martinez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a matter of information and I think, uh, most of you or most of us, uh, are aware of this. Uh. Laredo, of course, we're very fortunate, is the number one. Landport in international trade. Right now. The average number of eighteen-wheelers, north and south, that cross the. Bridges here in Laredo, between Laredo and Alareto. It averages on a daily basis between sixteen thousand and eighteen thousand, eighteen-wheelers on a daily basis. And this number is going to increase even more so. Because China. Has now. Bringing in a lot of the products that they actually. Were produced in China, being brought into Mexico. And all of that is going to increase the volume and the activity of. All of this international trade. So it is incredibly important. That, uh, we continue to promote our program in, because there is a shortage of. Truck drivers right now in our community. And, uh, all of you, and I assume on behalf of, I, I know on behalf of myself, as was the members of this board. And the administration, we want to thank you for this grant. Because it will be a very positive asset. To this particular program. And, uh, we need to continue to promote it. We need to continue to encourage many of our younger individuals, not only the young men, but also the young women. Because they can also be exceptional truck drivers. And, uh, I, I do commend you for, for this particular grant and, uh, Laredo. College obviously is going to make a very positive impact in all of this activity. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you all. You look really nice.
Congratulations again, and thank you for all your hard work on, uh, getting these, uh, programs. For our students here at Laredo College. Next item is five C, Introduction of Personnel, Personnel Actions. Dr. Minita Ramirez.
Yes, Madam Chair. Um, thank you. So we, a- as you, if you all recall at the last meeting, we did a, a little bit of reorg- restructuring or reorganizing. And so we want to recognize, um, some of the new hires and, um. And some of the reorganizations and their new titles and so that you're able to put names to faces. Uh, so when, uh, you hear about them in the community and the great job that people are doing so that you know. Uh, who some of these folks might be. And so, uh, I'm gonna, in no particular order, I'm gonna take the new hires first. Um, Paula Ovania, she's a clerk typist in student life. Paula, are you here? Yes, there she is. Our new Director of Student Life, Mr. Pedro Rivera. Uh, our new Graphic Web and Social Media Specialist, Juan Flores. Not here, but new hires, so I'm just gonna mention them. Our Faculty Secretary for the ADN BSN at the South Campus. Uh, Ms. Melissa Martinez and Faculty Secretary for the Emergency Medical Services at the South Campus, Diana Salcello. They couldn't join us this evening, but I didn't want to mention them. As part of the reorganization, uh, our new CRM Coordinator, uh, uh. That's our Customer Relations Management System that we're implementing and Enrollment Management. Uh, not new to the college, Ms. Rebecca Levins. Becky, are you here? Uh, the, the Global Import Export and Logistics Center Coordinator, Ms. Catherine Boya. Our Workforce Development Center Director, Denise Flores. Senior Workforce Development Coordinator, Miguel Flores. No relation. Uh, Professor of Logistics, uh, Distribution Management Department Chairperson, Ida Garcia Peña. Employer Initiatives Associate Director, Javier Gutierrez Jr. Javier is in the Workforce Development Center, the, working with Denise. Uh, the Director of Veterans Services Center, Albert Hernandez. Director of Grants, Gabriel Lozano, you just met, again. Assistant Professor of Cybersecurity, Computer Science and Technology, the Director of the Program is, uh, Taquani Perez. Director of Recruitment and Dual Enrollment, Julio Reyes. Associate Director for Career Services, Salvador Sharafa III. All of these under the reorg, they were all here. We just restructured a little bit to, to. Align their work with the, the job duties that they're doing. And so we're very proud of all of them. They, everybody's hit the ground running. Um, and, and doing an outstanding job. So thank you all for the confidence in. In, in all of them and in all of us as, as we move forward through all of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ramirez. Any comments? Welcome and congratulations to everybody. Keep up the good work. Next item is the Faculty Senate Report. Mr. Cash Nasa Hany.
Good evening. Uh, Madam Board President, President of the College. Administration Staff, Faculty and Students. Um, for the record, for Cash Nasa Hany, President of the Faculty Senate and Professor of Government. Uh, I have a quick report on behalf of our Faculty Senate and our colleagues and the faculty. Uh, I just wanted to mention, uh. Any items here. Number one is that our faculty right now is currently engaged in working on a retirement luncheon. For our faculty who re- previously, uh, retired or who are doing so, uh, this given semester and there are quite a few. There's a handful of names on that list and we really want to take a moment to, uh, honor their work over the years. Some who put. Decades worth of work, some who put, uh, many more than that, for example. So we're gonna go ahead and share the details and the information about that in the days to come. Once we kind of work that down together. So, uh, and definitely get an opportunity to at least honor them here once, hopefully. Um, to recognize their efforts, just in case, um, they're able to come. The other thing I do want to mention, because these changes are, uh, are, are coming soon. And that is that the Faculty Senate does have some very important choices to make. And that is that we have our elections. Uh, that are coming up. And so the faculty, uh, body, which includes about one hundred and seventy faculty. Will need to choose a president, a secretary, three senators at large, along with various senators that represent the various academic departments. Which include business, um, homeland security and so forth. So there's a variety of departments that are up for that. Um. So I do want to mention that. And so we'd like to report on that if we have more information and who our candidates are and when that election will be. That's supposed to wrap up in March. So by April, we should have new officers in place, um, previous officers as well, because the Vice President is not up for election. I do want to take another moment real quick in the final items on this report to thank our faculty, uh, in addition to our administration. Uh, and our faculty I wanted to thank just because, uh, sometimes. Uh, and I, I don't think there's anybody here who does so, but sometimes they, we forget how many. Hours they're spending in the classroom with the students each, uh, and every day. And I was looking at a report earlier today. And when you add up at the end of the spring, the, the spring, the winter semester and all of the contact hours. You're starting to see a number that goes up to one point two million hours of the amount of time that faculty are spending with their students in the class. And I think that. Like all the other work that everyone else is doing, whether in grants or whether in the staff, whether in the administration and always playing its role and. Leading up to the success, the success that we see here at the boards. And so I wanted to commend, at least as the Faculty Senate President and our faculty, for the work they do in the classroom. Because I know it's not easy. I also wanted to commend the faculty who are being considered for tenure today. It's not an easy process. To create those binders, make the case for all of the good evaluations that you've had. So hopefully, uh, well, I would just say I'm congratulating them for getting to this point. I'll leave the rest in the capable hands of, uh, everyone else who's in that process. And last but not least, I want to share one final item here, uh, with the Board of Trustees. It does appear, or I want to inform the board, that this will be one of my last board reports, not the last. Not just yet, but one of my last, uh, board reports. I've served in one capacity or another in the Faculty Senate for nearly about a decade. And that includes serving originally as the Elections Committee Chair and At-Large Senator, the former Vice President. And for the last four years as the President of the Faculty Senate. And as I was thinking back on those years, that includes at least four. College Presidents. Five, uh, Vice Presidents of Instruction, or sometimes in the past it was mixed together with Student Services. Many who are here today as well, who have served in different roles. Um, as well as Countess Board Members as well, across the various elections. And so it's been an honor to serve. I still have a little bit more time to serve in this role. Hopefully, uh, there will be other things that I can continue to do along with teaching in the classroom and serving in other roles at the college. Uh, and so I have a couple more reports to go. And I'll let you know which one is the last one, but I wanted to give you an idea that we are headed towards a new, uh, leadership team. For the Faculty Senate. And I'm gonna work to cultivate their leadership. But as I look back at the years, it's been a fantastic experience, uh, one of growth. And I never understood how much professional and. Personal growth would come from the opportunity to leave in the Faculty Senate. And from where I came to where I am today. I think the Faculty Senate and the colleagues that I work with, the administration, the staff, the faculty, even the students. Has been an integral role in who I am today. So I've got a couple more meetings, but I wanted to thank the Board Members for tolerating over the years. Uh, because it's been a pleasure to work with you all and I look forward to, uh, just a few more months here, or two more at least. So, thank you all. And that is my report for today. Thank you.
Thank you. You never know, you might be done. But thank you for.
If so, I, I, I will say this, the.
If you've been there that long, they might bring you down.
Let me, let me, let me say this, the Faculty Senate. And I'm gonna pat my back a little bit on this one. The Faculty Senate voted unanimously to allow me to run for an additional term. But of course, there's a lot of things happening at the college and a lot of programs and endeavors that I want to take part in as well. So. So we'll have to see where this goes. But I have a feeling we'll see each other again sometime soon at some point. But thank you very much.
For everything that you do for our college and, uh. And your leadership.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next item is the Associated Student Organization Report. Ms. Madi Salado-Pas.
Good afternoon. My name is Lisa Lopez, President of Acel for the Record. And I'm going to talk about the stu- about the students' activities from this month. First, you have our CPR training on the fourth of February. It was a success. We had this, um. Training regarding for Fun Fest and so on. They gave us extra information to prevent accidents and so on. And then my second item, it's the Fun Fest. We had a bunch of fun. We had fundraising, we had a lot of activities going on. And also we had a very fun going on. I ate a lot of this one. Awesome. Then my third item is Rocky Peter. He served in the campus with a mix of classic and original sauce. His performance at the Elsie Well Open. And, yeah, and leader, Martin, Martinez Fine Arts Center delighted the audience on the fourteenth on Valentine's Day. And then we had a student service fair, but at the South Campus. We had a great fun. A lot of students didn't know about our services here in the campus. And they were all excited. And we're planning on doing this type of fair. Doing mentor for next ASO generations. So like new students, freshmen, students can know, like what else he has, what else. And then I have Ed memory who was, who. The strength of, the strength of loving oneself and those around, oh, my bad, I'm so sorry, I'm. With this thing on, I'm kind of like, I, I can't, I gotta, my bad. Okay, he, he had a great words. Uh, he was speaking, so I couldn't attend that, that, um. And that event, uh, my accent, but it was a good, it was, it was a good experience. And then. This week we had a clever, our main campus clever was on the twenty-first and our second clever was at South Campus today. Auto, uh, we had a lot of students who were recruited and a lot of recruits. And for now, that's it. Thank you.
Next item we have is the Classified Staff Council Report, Ms. Elizabeth Galeno. Next item is that we have the Consent Agenda.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda from items nine eight all the way down through nine N.
So I have a motion to approve consent agenda items nine eight through nine N. By Mr. Martinez. I have a second by Mr. DeGaleva and Mrs. Ramos. Any discussion? Non-earned, on favor?
Yes, I mean, this is that on it, um, on the, where is it? It's the, um. Environmental side? We need to find that. We need to find that one point four. Uh, I don't know where, but it, it was just, I, I just thought about it ever since. We had the meeting on Tuesday, and I think it's something that we could really, really benefit from. So I don't know. I guess we have to beg, borrow, and steal, go somewhere. I need to.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just to elaborate on the point from, uh, Ms. Vela's, uh, during our committee meeting of the, uh, finance meeting. We discussed the Margaret Science Center, um, I guess, update, uh, to it. And one of the rooms we were notified is going to be removed. The multipurpose room, uh, due to lack of funding and of course, the increase in price. And so I, I do agree with the sentiments and statements that Ms. Vela says. That we do need to find the money for that, because I believe that, that addition, uh, to the environmental center will be. Yeah, a very unique addition, uh, but also a prosperous one, not only for the community, but also most important for Laredo College.
To recognize Dr. Martinez.
And just for the record, we're not eliminating it, we have the plans, the plans are ready. We're just going to put it on hold, so we're not, we're not doing away with it each other. We're just putting it on hold until until we can find the money to to support it. But the plans are there, the space is there, we know where it's going to go, we know that the value of the. The the building, but one point four million is what we're going to need to to finish that up. Okay, so.
Okay, so everybody knows extra money?
Pocket change. No, the. The sad thing is, the longer we wait, the more it goes up. So I I don't know, we'll have to put our thing apps on and see what we could conquer up.
Sure, Mr. Ellen will be looking at it as well. Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item, discussion and possible action, ten A, tenure recommendation for consideration and approval by Laredo College Board of Trustees. Dr. Madi Salado Olivas de Hidina.
Madi Salado Olivas de Hidina, Provost, Vice President of Academic Affairs. I say, good, good evening, board members, Dr. Ramirez and guests. It is with great honor that I stand before you as provost to make recommendations of our tenured faculty that are being recommended. They have all adhered to the community service, college service, departmental service. And above all, our true practitioners, they have the the passion for their subject area and for teaching. And I'm going to ask them to come one by one as I present them. I mean, faculty doesn't like this part, but they certainly need to be honored. Ms. Brenda Garcia will be first. She's an Assistant Professor of Cosmetology and Department Chair. She began her cosmetology career as a junior at Dr. Leo Sierra High School. And upon graduating, she received her cosmetology operating license. Ms. Garcia continued her education at Laredo College, where she earned two associate degree. She received her cosmetology instructor operator license and graduated from TMIU with a Bachelor of Business Administration degree. Ms. Garcia has been in the beauty industry for twenty-two years, eight of those as cosmetology instructor. And five of which have been here at the college, so. Ms. Brenda Garcia. Ms. Ordencia Garcia, I'm sorry, Ms. Ordencia Gonzalez. Is an Associate Professor of Diagnostic Imaging and Program Director. Oversees Laredo College Radiologic Technology and Diagnostic Medical Sonography Programs. She graduated from LC Radiology Radiology Technology Program in two thousand and five. In two thousand and twelve, she earned her general and cardiac sonography licenses. Her diagnostic imaging clinical experience spans over a decade. She acquired a bachelor's degree in diagnostic imaging and an MBA while working as a sonographer and radiographer. She's pursuing a doctorate degree in higher education and organizational leadership from Liberty University. And I do want to commend these two ladies, because when they came on board, they started new programs. And that's challenging to not just come in as a faculty member, but to design a brand new program. And really take the charge and the lead of making that program grow. So I know it was really stressful, but they they have earned their ranks definitely here at the college. Next is Ms. Jeanette Johnson, she's an Assistant Professor of Associate Degree Nursing. She has been teaching full-time at Laredo College since twenty eighteen. Ms. Johnson graduated from TMIU University with a Master of Science in Nursing, Family Nurse Practitioner. She has worked as a registered nurse at Methodist Hospital in San Antonio. And a private duty pediatric field nurse for Epic Healthcare in Laredo. Ms. Cynthia Rodriguez is the Director of Library Services at Laredo College and has over sixteen years' experience in academic libraries. Ms. Rodriguez holds a Master's Degree in Library Science and a Master's Degree in Business Administration, both from Texas Women University. She's currently pursuing a doctoral degree focusing on educational leadership. Ms. Rodriguez is an active member of the American Liberty Association, the Texas Library Association, and the Texas Council of Academic Libraries. She is the current chair elect for the Texas Council of Academic Libraries. Ms. Sandra Sanchez, she's an Assistant Professor of Cosmetology. She has over three decades of experience in the beauty profession, including twenty-three years as an educator. The last five years, which have been devoted to Laredo College. She has earned her cosmetology instructor's license and operator's license through the state of Texas. She continues to invest in her students and their success and has witnessed their professional achievements firsthand. The board, I present to you our recommendations for tenure.
So move, Madam Chair.
So I have a motion, I have a second by Mr. Martinez and Mrs. Lemon Ramos. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Your sign is so well behaved.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, ladies. Next item is ten B, minor reorganization of the Academic Affairs Division, Dr. Madi Salado Olivas de Hidina.
Madi Salado Olivas de Hidina, Provost, Vice President of Academic Affairs. I just distributed a handout at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting. I'm very proud to say that the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board. Already approved our construction management and our engineering technology programs. We're just pending SACS-UC approval, so we can start advertising, we can start recruiting. Students for these two programs, as long as we have the disclaimer until we get SACS-UC approval. But in there, you'll see under the Dean of Workforce Education how we're adding a program, or a department rather. And we're going to combine engineering. So under the the Dean of Workforce Education, we're adding the Department Engineering Design and Construction Management Technology. So this team will consist of the Engineering Program, Academic Engineering Technology. Our Computer Aided Design and Drafting Program, Construction Management and our Visual Arts. We truly think that bringing these minds together, we could possibly expand, possibly, on an architectural technology program. But in the meantime, that department will be new, and since we already got notification of THCB just recently. The. After we presented the reorganization, but it's crucial that we start to advertise the construction management position. And then we're going to separate Culinary Arts and Child Development. And. The rest on for as far as the Dean of Workforce Education has already been presented in the prior reorganization. As far as the Dean of Arts and Sciences or the Division of Arts and Sciences under Dr. Vasu Salinas. We have our interim Department Chair, Mr. Prokash Muntzinhani, who is willing to take the lead. Dr. Hillary Gleason is stepping down from her Social Behavioral Sciences role. So that she can assist us in the Quality Enhancement Plan instructional duties that we have for the SACS fifty year report. And then we're adding a new department, which is the Theatrical and Performing Arts. We truly feel that by bringing, this is sort of a replacement of William Housman. Which will now be housed at least the part of instruction under our belt. And then we'll be working with Mr. Camerino Castillo on the the forum and that we intend to to hire under that lead. So, pretty much, we hope this is it. But we're certainly very excited, part of, again, why this reorganization occurred is because of the new programs that are up and coming.
Any questions?
No.
Okay, so I have a motion by Mrs. Lemon Ramos, and I have a second manager of the panel. Discussion, did you have something to say? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. Next item is ten C, consider adopting a board policy. Excuse me, applicable to Laredo College Volunteers, Ms. Jackie Lemon Ramos.
Madam Chair, I would like to set aside this item for another time. We're working on making sure that we get everything correct. And we started the communication and the discussion at our meeting yesterday. So I would like to see that that this is placed for another time, I don't know, I have to make a motion. Mr. Mayor, you have to make a motion.
The board can make a motion to defer the item to a board meeting in the future.
Okay, so I actually made that motion to defer this item to a future.
Okay, so I have a motion to defer item ten C and I have a second by Minister De Gavro, discussion. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, like to recognize an attendance, Mr. Sorry, I'm having to hear moments. Next item is ten D, student enrollment report, Dr. Fred Solis, Ms. Jessica Termino.
Good evening, Madam President, esteemed board members, President Ramirez, colleagues and friends. Fred Solis, Vice President for Student Success and Enrollment, and.
Good evening, Jessica Termino, Associate Vice President for Enrollment Management.
This evening, we would like to inform the board of our first term that's upcoming after the spring semester. And that's the term that we normally refer to as the Spring Second Start. This is an opportunity for students who could not enroll back in January, they have a second opportunity to join the college. And so registration has been open since then. This is an eight-week mini-term that will that will begin on March the twentieth and runs through May the twelfth. As of now, the schedule consists of mainly academic courses that are offered online. I believe there's one hybrid course and one face-to-face course that comprises the schedule at this time. Overall, there's twenty-nine sections in this particular mini-term of eight weeks, of which nine have already maxed out. And about eleven are already soon to make or or reach their maximum capacities as well. Looking ahead for our next terms, basically, we have had advising all year round. The next term that's that's due to come up is actually our May semester, summer and fall semester registration period. That is going to open on March the twenty-seventh. One thing that I do want to take a note of and 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 inform the board of. Is we're also launching a new initiative called Degree Works. This is a specialized software specifically earmarked for student advising, academic advising. That helps students stay on track following the appropriate course work for the certificate and degree plan. I do have to acknowledge the fact that for this particular endeavor. Thanks to Ms. Jessica Termino, and also I'd like to recognize Sandra Lopez. Who have collaborated and put in this project together and is currently being deployed as we speak. We're already ongoing training of faculty on how to use it and advisors on how to use it as well. One of the new items that we do want to call attention to for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Is that your typical semester that you and I are probably accustomed to experiencing, which is a semester of sixteen weeks. Typically, a student would enroll in a class in August and carry that class all the way through December. Well, this coming fall semester, that experience is going to be quite different. Instead of participating in the sixteen-week course, our whole academic schedule for the upcoming fall semester is going to be broken down into two fall mini-terms. Fall mini-term number one will actually begin on August the twenty-first and run through August the thirteenth, which is typically the halfway mark over a long semester. And then shortly thereafter, on October the sixteenth, fall mini-term ensues, and that will run through December, which is our typical ending point of our regular semester. The same format is going to then be repeated for the upcoming spring semester of twenty twenty-four. Now, there's reasons why this is being executed at this time. Research has shown that for students that are attending part-time, it's much easier to take a few classes at a time. But during the same period, actually end up accomplishing or finishing off more classes. So say, for instance, a part-time student that can only come to campus, let's say, from eight to ten, and in so doing, end up taking two classes. Well, as a part-timer in a regular semester, that's all it would take over sixteen weeks. Now, they'll be able to take two for the first eight weeks and another two for the second half. Or the or the or the second eight weeks, so therefore, a part-timer ends up competing faster. Because they're actually competing more courses in the same amount of period or the same.
They actually become full-time students, yeah, very good.
And additionally, if you.
To recognize it, Mr. Ryan.
I think this is a great initiative. Do, did we like run a survey, doctor, to see if, like, what is our projected, a projection of how many students we might be anticipating? Do we have any idea?
That's currently in the works right now, as we work with through the enrollment management and the recruitment efforts that are undergoing right now. Our registration will begin until March twenty-seventh, so at that time, we'll have a better gauge in terms of how that is open now.
And what's the next courses that we choose?
They're all the academic courses, the core courses, yes. We have been, we have been running eight-week terms, as as an example, the second start in the fall and the second start in the spring. Those are already in eight-week formats, but we always held on to the sixteen-week anyway, not anymore.
Thank you, and this isn't top, we're still going to have our winter and May.
Yes.
That's good.
And just to answer your question, we're projecting an incoming class of a thousand six hundred and twenty-five students, which would be a five percent increase from the fall enrollment. So from fall to the fall, the goal is a five percent increase, that is what we're working to.
That's really good, that is really, really good.
It's the projection.
Don't, 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 don't.
But it's a realistic target that we have to work with, and so it gives us something to aim for.
It does make a lot of sense for for working past, you know, people that just want to come in here and and get their their their. Their courses done, that's a really good initiative, congratulations.
And so the to answer the question that you asked, again, the the mini-semester that we're already accustomed to, such as the May semester and the winter semester, those will still be in effect as well. Other programs will continue with all their other variations, for instance, our Bachelor's Degree in Organizational Leadership. That is running on a seven-week term, and so there's two terms in the fall and two terms in the spring for that program as well. Again, with the purpose of accelerating course completion and getting the students to finish a lot quicker. The workforce courses are perhaps in the most accelerated format as as we know it. These courses are covered over four, four-week terms, so every four weeks, the student starts a new class. So and and when they begin the program for the first four weeks, they take class number one. Class number one ends, and then they roll into class number two for another four weeks and so forth. And and that is what we refer to as block scheduling. And what it does in terms of the student, it gives predictability to the student of when they can come to class. And so if they say, I can only come to class from eight to ten in the morning, well, all their classes, all four classes will be from eight to ten over the span of the the whole semester. And so again, with student success in mind, accelerating students to completion, that's that's what it's about.
To recognize Dr. Ramirez, so one of the things I I I. Where our our goal is to. We're, our, our goal is to move part-time students into full-time status. To increase semester credit hours, to increase graduation and increase retention of students, right? And so we've been running a pilot, the college has been running a pilot on this already, and we've, they, the, the, the indication is that there is increased success for students who go through this now. Some of the, one of our school districts is already doing this. At, at UIC, they're doing it. At LIC, they're still running the sixteen-week semesters. And so we're not going to affect the, this won't affect the dual-credit teaching we're doing on the campuses. Pending their, their scheduling, right? So, so we're, we're working through the dual-credit piece to make sure that we're still accommodating both our, all of our districts that we service. So this will affect our students, and, and ideally, we're going to see an increased semester credit hour production, an increase in enrollment, and an increase in retention and graduation.
So lastly, it has been noted, we already met with our dual-credit partners earlier this week, particularly with United ISD. We did put them a notice that our calendar and scheduling is changing, but not theirs, and so they can remain with their course scheduling the way it is.
Chair recognizes Mrs. Ramos and then Mrs. Lemon.
Yes, yes, yes. That conclusion.
So first of all, I, I do want to say that I'm very happy to hear the implementation of Degree Works. Degree Works saved my life because I was able to graduate with my second masters at Penn U, and it worked. Like, they were able to tell me that I didn't have to repeat so many courses. So I'm very appreciative of having that program be implemented with, with us because it's going to increase our graduation rate. So, speaking of retention, graduation, and recruitment, it's all within the same, you know, area. So, and I'm so happy to hear that we're moving towards eight-week terms. There are so many colleges and so many universities out there that are already running with the eight-week terms. And so I, I would just like to suggest that we do not say there are many terms. They are going to be terms. From this point forward, we're running on this type of schedule. And so one thing that I noticed is mainly online academic courses, where are the face-to-face courses? I would like to see, well, personally, but this is just my opinion, and I think the board has their opinion also as well. I'd like to have that increase in the face-to-face, and I know we're gradually moving towards that, but can you jump in right now?
Yes, and so let me just clarify that, I mean, Ramos, and I apologize for the misconception. The spring second start that begins in March, that is only online. But for the fall, when we do the two-eight-week terms, that's a, that's a mix of online courses, face-to-face courses, hybrid courses, so the whole repertoire will be available in an eight-week format.
And we couldn't bring it on board now?
No, because what happened is a lot of our faculty are already booked to cover the, the regular schedule that's in the sixteen-week spring term. And so based on the availability and the course load of the faculty, those that are available are actually volunteering for the second start.
But we should be seeing that. What is summer, summer session one and summer session two? Because we do have that kind of.
Those are already in the compressed five-week format.
Okay.
And so we don't see compressing that any further, at least not now. But for sure, for the fall semester, then all of our course inventory that's academic will run on those two-eight-week terms.
And the reason I say that, and, and thanks for allowing me to continue to talk, is because I want to see more people here. And I think that having the two, the eight-week terms, and I won't say many, because there are not many, but eight turn, eight-week terms will bring those students to take those face-to-face courses. And again, it's going to increase the retention. People are going to want to come back for the eight weeks. And, and I, I, I highly, you know, I would like to see that. I would like to see more face-to-face availability for the students because personally, I, I, I like to learn in person, and there's a lot of online courses. But we have a very, we're, we're in a competitive state because Lamar University, all of those, they offer the online courses. I would like to see that we, we offer the face-to-face more so we can be able to entice them and, and, and ask them to come on over and attend this beautiful campus, you know, so.
For all those reasons and more, that's why we're doing it.
Appreciate. Thank you so much.
Mrs. Vela? This is a win-win. It really is for us and for our students, and even for the community. And I agree with Ms. Ramos that I don't want the mini.
No.
Because it's not a mini. You're, I mean, it's a whole class.
Right.
It's the whole time. It's just, we're going to have to remember it's a block schedule from now on.
Do we know that?
Yeah. Anything else? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. The next item is 10E, Texas Governor's Order Regarding the Use of Social Media Software and Laredo College Draft Policy. Dr. Anita Ramírez and Mr. Albert Chavez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We, we've got a short presentation that we did at committee, but we'd like for everyone to be aware. In your package, you received a copy of a letter that we received from the Governor's Office about software being used on our college campuses. And, and so Mr. Chavez and his team have been working diligently to make sure that we adhere to the requirements from the Governor's Office, and so, Mr. Chavez?
Good evening, Chair and members of the board. Albert Chavez, Associate Vice President for Information Technology. I'm going to run through a, a short presentation that I did yesterday for the Program and Policy Committee. On the presentation, I'm just going to outline what the governor has required the state agencies and colleges, what we have done so far, and what we still need to complete. So, on timeline, on December 7th, 2022, Governor Abbott sent orders aggressively, orders up to state agencies to aggressively block access to TikTok. On February 26th, there was a follow-up, and Governor Greg Abbott announced the statewide model security plan. So he basically laid out the foundation for all state agencies to come up with the policies and procedures for his requirement. Short after they announced the deadline of February 15th for state agencies to implement their own policy to enforce the statewide plan. One of the, the questions that has come up, community colleges or colleges are not agencies. But as we were going through the meetings, they clarified that also colleges were part of this mandate. So what have we done so far? The college drafted a standard administrative procedure and was submitted, was reviewed by the executive team and was submitted to Texas DIR by the deadline, which was February the 15th. Right now, we're just, we're waiting for Texas Department of Information Resources and DPS to review the, the standard administrative procedure. They have developed the task force that's going to be reviewing all these documents for all the agencies, colleges and universities throughout the state. And they're going to be providing feedback. The next step for us is after we receive approval on this document, we will be executing that standard administrative procedure. Ongoing already, we're starting to review software and hardware because aside from TikTok, there are other pieces of software that are on, on the website that the, the state has put together. So basically, TikTok is the main item, but the state has actually come up with a more comprehensive list. So there are other services like, on the software side, there's, there's an antivirus program called Kiferski. That one's on the list. Some agencies were using that. There's another chat program that's pretty common that's called WeChat. That's on, on the, on the blacklist also. And then on the hardware side, manufacturers of equipment like Howie and CTE are also on the blacklist. So we are reviewing our, our, our hardware and software inventory throughout the college to make sure that we're in compliance. But if we are currently already blocking access to TikTok on our campus network, so that has already been put into place. We are going to be reviewing or updating our technology review process to make sure that we, as we are receiving requests to purchase new technology, that we're looking through this list that the state is going to be updating on a regular basis to make sure that we're not procuring any software or hardware that's on that list. And IT will also continue to work with the procurement department to make sure that we're not purchasing any, any of those items. So currently, IT and, and purchase, purchasing work hand-in-hand in, in the procurement process. But again, we're just going to enhance our communication to make sure that we're on the same page. And at this point, I mean, I'll open it up for, for comments. We just wanted to keep you up to date as to what's going on so far. I know TikTok has been on the news statewide, so we just wanted to keep you up to date as to what the college is doing.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chavez. Any questions? Move over to the next item, President's Remarks. Eleven A Campus Police Personal and Travel Reports. Dr. Anita Ramírez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've already talked about personnel matters, and as far as clarity report for campus police, we don't have anything to report, thankfully. But we will be working on a restructuring of our, our reporting for you all starting next week. We have our new police chief and, and Dr. David Asola working on that to be a little more transparent with you all. But, you know, the day-to-day things that do happen and so that you have an, an idea of what's going on. Not, there are no major things happening, but you know, it's, it's nice to know what our, our folks are doing and supporting and helping our students daily. When they lock their keys in their cars and they have a flat tire and things like that, and, and we're able to assist them from a service standpoint. And so I think it's important that you all know the good work that they are doing. So we'll, we'll bring that to you next, next month. Also, from a travel, we were in, in Austin for Community College Day. I want to thank all of you that, that were able to make the trip. It was, I think, extremely beneficial to all of us and certainly to our ongoing mission of getting our new finance structure approved by the state legislature. We did get notice yesterday from TAC on that. The bill has not yet been filed, but we're being assured that by the middle of next week, before the March 10th deadline, it will be filed. It is the number one priority of the governor. So those of you that watched the State of the State address by Governor Abbott, he did prioritize community college funding as number one, which is wonderful for all of us. And certainly, if we can follow through on our, on our hopes and, and projections on enrollment growth, it should certainly help our cer, our current situations, and then maybe we can come back to the Lamar Bruni Vergara Environmental Center, you know, with, with some of, of that. So I, I don't know. I mean, there's so many things hanging on the, on the balance here, but certainly, we're very cognizant of the need for our students to take more semester credit hours and certainly the need for us to continue to grow and develop our programs. And I think you saw evidence of that this evening from everyone. And, and everyone is certainly doing their part to try to mitigate some of the financial situations that we have by, by our grant writer and, and the different departments working with Mr. Losano to get those grants in and, and certainly approved. We've got quite a few grants that are sitting out there. We're waiting to hear. As you heard him say, some of these grants, you apply two or three times before you're successful. And so we're just going to keep trying. We're going to keep looking for, for those opportunities. One of our goals right now is our, our facilities. And so we're desperately looking for support on some of our older facilities, our historical sites. And as you said, Ms. Vela, you know, we, we get a GMAX price. And then, you know, as we get into the construction project, eight months later, prices go up and we're still in, under construction, and, and then we have to come back for, for some support. So we, we, we need to be careful with that. We understand that. We're, we're working very diligently through our budget and, and making sure that we continue to stay within our budget. But, but some of these buildings need to be fixed, and so we're looking for other external ways of, of supporting those endeavors. And so I'm really proud of the team. I think everybody is, is really trying to, to work at maximum throttle to, to make sure that we continue to provide service not only to our, our campus community, but certainly to our communities at large. And so I'm, I'm very proud of, of working alongside all of them. And, and everybody's really trying to think outside of the box, as we say, and, and looking for alternatives to try to continue to grow our, our beloved college. And so I'm very grateful to your support. There are so, there are so many things coming up. There are so many things. We recently had, some of you were here for Fun Fest. We had an incredible group of people that really worked hard at making that, that event a success. And so Camerino Castillo was kind of chairing that, or he chaired that, along with his team. And then every department and every office that participated did such an outstanding job in making it a Fun Fest. And so there's a lot of lessons to be learned from the work that we do like that for our students. And, and you heard Miss Lopez talk about how they all learned from that experience. And, and so we're, we're very proud of the work that they're doing. I'm also very grateful to Luzba. Some of you were here also for that check presentation of $10,000 that, that they gave to the program, to our Global Import/Export and Logistics Center. You met Ms. Nina Garcia, who is, is now the Director of the Center. That has the opportunity to be explosive for us in a good way. And so we're, we're really looking forward to continue partnerships with, with that department. We had the Viva George book signing. That book signing was very well attended. Dr. Yang Bangya from George Washington University wrote a book about Laredo and the border community. And she is an expert in, in border studies and, and people that, that cross borders and why they cross borders. And so her book started out as one thing and ended up as, as something else, but she is a Laredo one. She claims Laredo is her home. She is now a tenured professor at George Washington University, and she chose Laredo College for her book signing. So we were very honored to, to host her and, and the community that came out for that event. Our, our youth parade and George Washington's birthday parade presentation of our float was, was extremely well-received from the public. I had the, the fortune to walk alongside our, our students and, and our, our staff members. That, we had people along the parade route with signs and posters that said, I love Laredo College. And it was so nice to see all of that. We, we had a, we had, one, we had a great time. But, but two, it was great exposure for, for the college, for our students who rode on the float. And, and the staff and I walked along the side, and so thank you to the team. We've got a whole bunch of them that were here. We, Jorge Dimas and Julio Reyes and Bobby and we, we all, there's a whole bunch of people here. We all had a great time, and, and everyone did a great job in putting that together and, and showing our, our, our campus spirit to, to the community. And last but not least, today, we kicked off the morning. It's a two-day conference on our campus, actually some meeting. The Governor's Committee on People with Disabilities is having their, their quarterly meeting here on our campus. And it's being held in the Falcon Room. I was there this morning. They are broadcasting it live from here. And their chair is, is originally, his name's Richard Martinez. His mom was a teacher, a school teacher for LIC for many years, Ms. Molly Martinez. And so he is the chair of that committee, and they, they're all governor appointees. But it, it, it was really nice to have them here, and, and certainly, he spoke very nicely about how he met his wife here forty years ago, when they were students here at Laredo College. And he, he, it was very nice to have them on campus, and so thank you to the team who put that together as well. And, and, you know, there are lots of great things happening here. And we're, we've got a long way to go. Like anything else, we've got our aches and pains, but, but certainly, we're working through those and, and continuing to push our college forward. And so thank you all again for your support, and, and thank you again for. And so thank you all again for your support and thank you again for showing up to the events that we ask you to come and support us. And it means a lot. It means a lot to our campus community to have you here and to have your support. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, and I got to see a lot of you guys dancing on the parade. So I'm glad you all had a good time, and Elsie was out there at both parades. Thank you. Any comments?
Good job.
Good job. Next item we have, I think President's Comments is what you've already reported. Next item we have is the next meeting dates, Thursday, March second at five-thirty. We have a special Board of Trustees meeting. Saturday, March fourth at nine AM, we have our Board Retreat. Thursday, March thirtieth at six PM, we have a regular Board of Trustees meeting. Any questions on the dates?
The retreat will be held as a matter of record for...
Here, here at the college.
Exactly where?
At the Falcon.
Falcon, okay.
The Falcon Bank Room.
Welcome, any room.
It's for everyone. Room two twenty-two. Room two twenty-two. Next door from the actual Falcon Center.
That's Saturday.
That's Saturday, yes. The nine to two.
I'm not going to be here thirty, but I can zoom in if possible.
Sure. Sure.
And I will obviously... I can't zoom that one.
Okay.
But I can zoom one.
Okay, note taken. Did I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
So I have a motion about Mr. Ramos' second by Mr. DeGale. A discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.